Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There we go.
Thank you. I'd like to call the regular board meeting for Benita Springs Fire Rescue to order Monday, September 12, 2022. Please, Rush.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for six firefighters across the U.S. who've lost their lives this past month, and being this close to 9/11, also just to reflect on that day and what that means to all those that sacrificed their lives. Dear God, we come today to give honor to whom honor is due. We thank you for those that have committed themselves to the care and watching over others, and for those, Lord, that have lost their lives in their line of service, we pray that you will bless them and watch over them for eternity, that you will be with their families, give them strength and comfort. And, Lord, as always, we just ask for your protection for the firefighters here in Benita Springs and the area. Protect them, Lord, keep them safe, watch over their families, and guard them. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Due to technicalities, we will now call a recess to this meeting and call the tentative budget hearing to order. Commissioner Maturro, if you'd read that into the record.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Number one, this hearing is to adopt the tentative millage and budget for 2022, 2023. Number two, the tentative millage of 1.980 per thousand dollars will be 1.98% more than the rollback rate of 1.9415 mils. Number three, the reason for this increase in millage amount over rollback is A, increased personnel services and wages, and B, replacement of fire and medical equipment. Four, the total ad valorem taxes generated from the millage of 1.9800 will be $29,147,117. Net taxes will be $28,191,131,27 cents. Five, the general fund budget for 2022 and 2023 will be $49,188,7347. The tentative impact fee budget for 2022, 2023 will be $612,581,15 cents.
Do we have any public input on the millage rate or the budget submitted for 2022, 2023? Hearing none. Need a motion to adopt and approve the tentative millage rate of 1.9800.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no.
Number eight, adopt the tentative general fund budget of $49,188,7347 for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Adopt the tentative impact fee budget of $612,581,15 for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Need a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That concludes the tentative budget hearing, so we'll adjourn that, and we'll call our regular meeting back to order. Any public comment on agenda items this evening? Seeing none, need an approval for the August 8, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion for the September 1, 2022, budget workshop minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One motion, please, for August 2022 and current expenditures and ACH payments, the acknowledgement of financial reports, the acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts, and POs over $10,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Needed a motion to approve the disposal report.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners' business.
We're all going to say the same thing. Fantastic job on the 9/11 memorial. That was really nice. Well done by you and your entire staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to say the same thing. It was wonderful. It's simplistic, but you know what? You get something like a little fan, and thank you for whoever did that, and you get a sweatband, you know. I saw Dave Grassi sweating, and I wanted to go wipe him off. But very, very nice, and the dessert was fantastic.
Again, I'm going to reiterate that. I think Nicole did an outstanding job, as well as the rest of the team. I think that the finishing off of that wall with the mural is absolutely outstanding, and we acknowledged the artist yesterday, but it just, I can't draw a straight line with a ruler, and it just to see that go on a building like that in a short a period of time, to me, is just mind-boggling. But I think, you know, it was a great addition, and again, like we always say, we hope we never forget that tragic event. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I got nothing to say. They said it all.
All right, the next item is, this is you, Chief.
Promotions. Due to COVID and some other extenuating circumstances, we didn't have, we haven't had a chance to pin these gentlemen that got promoted. So right now, I'd like to say a few words about Lieutenant Calvin Payne. Lieutenant Calvin Payne was promoted Jan, or July the 11th of 2022. He was hired November of 2012. Hired as a firefighter. We kind of stole him away, or acquired him, however you want to look at it, from Lee I. Acres. He came on board. He was already certified as a paramedic. Within a couple, I think it was like six or eight months, he went through the credentialing process and became one of our credentialed paramedics. You know, almost five years to the day, he went and took his acting lieutenant test, you know, stuck with it. You know, two years went by, he didn't get it. Another two years went by, and then he was number one. So July came around, and it was time to promote, and, you know, Calvin fit the bill. Just so you guys know a little bit about Calvin, he was, he is on the USAR team. He is one of the lead instructors or lead personnel for the Swiftwater, and I did have the opportunity to work with him shoulder to shoulder over at Surfside. So he's a hell of a guy, and I'm more than happy to promote him, and I'm going to have him and his wife come up so she can pin him. Next one on our list is for Battalion Chief Rich Lanza. Rich Lanza came to us, you know, his, not to belabor his lineage, but his father was a battalion chief and chief over in Fort Lauderdale. I knew who he was over there. Rich moved over to here, to this coast, the best coast, I mean, the west coast, back in 2000, 2001. We hired him in eight of 2001. November 2001, this is the kind of person Rich is, that's why I bring it up. He had a family incident or family emergency where Rich decided to quit. He was going to go take care of some family on the west coast, and, you know, he quit, tendered his resignation. Things got better. Rich then did come back, and we hired him, and he's been exemplary employee since then. And that's the type of guy that Rich is, always looking out for others, always helping others. So five of, or, yeah, five of '02, he was rehired. Before he left, he became a paramedic, and '07, he was promoted to lieutenant. He's got his USAR app in. He's wanting to be part of the team. He's just been part of our team. He's been integral in all aspects, in helping out, in teaching. He did a brief stint of training captain, to see if he liked it, to see if that was something he did. He did a great job. You know, just as most of us do, we enjoy shift work a little bit better than we'd like the 40-hour in some time. When you're not ready to make that move to 40 hours, it weighs on you a little bit. But back in May, he was promoted to battalion chief, so I'd like to call Rich and his wife Jennifer up to pin him, and congratulations, Rich. The other two on the agenda were unable to be here. Deputy Chief Schmidt is actually in South Carolina at Milliken, looking at material for our gear, and since she rode, we're supposed to be with him, but he is injured right now. He hurt his back on Saturday. So we'll do them next month.
I guess when you become, when you become chief, you get soft. Is that the deal?
Yes. So, next one on our list, no more promotions. It is...
Yeah, you're going to get embarrassed.
It's for Lisa Gendron. Lisa started here 25 years ago, you know. Lisa has been, huh? I'm going to be nice. This is PG, PG, I can't get too crazy.
I've never seen her red before.
I know.
Are you giving the award to us or to her?
I know. So, you know, Lisa's been here 25 years, you know. She's been a great employee. She's what we look for as employee. She, I don't know if it's fortunately or unfortunately, she's not afraid to speak her mind to any one of us and tell us what, what she thinks about finance. She has promoted up through the ranks. She, you know, started out kind of like Beverly as a finance coordinator, a helper, and then Tony took her underneath her wing and showed her how to do the finance, how to do the budget, how to do the audit, much to her chagrin, the audit. And then, you know, when Iris started talking about leaving, you know, Iris took her under her wing and, you know, showed her how to be the administrative director also. So, you know, I'd just like to thank her for always having my back, having the commissioner's back, and doing such a fine job on the budget and all the finances. So both haven't been to jail yet, so we've got to be doing something right.
It's a good thing, it's a good thing we're thick-skinned.
And as you know, usually on 25, or not 25 years, on all the years of service, I usually read from the evaluation and what her supervisor said. I haven't done it yet, so I didn't get to read it.
Yeah.
So that's your, that's your evaluation.
Some of it had to be censored, I'm sure.
Yes, exactly. It is public record, so it has to be censored and redacted.
At this time, I will take another short recess if anybody doesn't want to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to, but if anybody'd like to leave, now's the time. Thank you all for coming.
Something we said?
Alex didn't leave.
People are done. Is it over?
Yeah.
Hey, brother.
Congratulations, man.
Congratulations.
Boy, they promote anybody, aren't they?
Scraping the bottom.
Yeah.
Congratulations, brother.
Excellent work.
Glad to catch you.
Yeah.
Stick around, man.
Chief?
Congratulations, brother.
Well deserved.
Something we said?
Thank you, sir.
Of course.
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. Does anybody have any old business they need, we need to talk about?
I, I don't know. Sir, are you going to bring up anything about the progress on the roof of?
There, I mean, we can talk about it now. We haven't had any progress on it. We were waiting on the architect and engineer to bring some stuff back to us, along with the back apron of Station 2. We did remove a light pole at Station 2, seeing if that would help the situation of them making it turn into Station 2. I haven't heard any update that it's made it worse, so we're still waiting on that. The architect did go to the engineers, and they were just going to do it as pro bono, because again, there's no sense of spending money on design and getting construction documents when either A, the city won't allow it, or the structure itself was, speaking back to the roof, if the structure itself cannot withstand an upgrade of the roof versus just a facade.
Preliminary engineering report.
Cool. Thank you.
All right, new business. We need approval of the job description changes. Administrative assistant, administrative finance director, administrative logistics coordinator, human resource coordinator, public information officer, public education specialist. Need a motion to approve that?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is approval of Dr. Abos' contract.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of budget transfer number two.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The write-off of the uncollectible fees from the prevention side. Need a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the approval of the General Pensilvano Resolution 22-08-01, including the PRIA option and COLAR increase.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're up, Chief.
All right. I have a few things on my list for tonight. First, as all of you did, I want to take the opportunity to thank staff for what they did for September 11. They did, they've outdone themselves again, as we see it. After, event after event after event, they seem to outdo themselves. So we keep setting the bar high, and they keep, you know, climbing over it and succeeding above that. The other thing I'd like to do is also thank the city. The city was nice enough to allow us to borrow their stage. Last year, the stage that we had was a little small, a little confined. This year, they allowed us to use their stage. So I want to thank, to take this opportunity to thank Councilwoman Laura Carr, who is representing the city here tonight, to thank you very much for allowing us to use that, and you guys are always welcome there. Next on our li, on my list is just some training updates, so you, as the board, knows what's going on here. On the 14th and 15th this week, we're having an S-215 class, which is fire operations in wildland urban face. It's basically a forestry class that, so our guys can, you know, assist in the brushfire season that comes up every year. We require that to have, we want our lieutenants to have it and our chief officers to have this class, so we're putting it on in-house the 14th and 15th. And then the following week, 21st through 22nd is an S-330 class, which is a strike team and task force leader class. Again, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's this month?
Yeah, this month. All these are this month, sir. The task force leader and strike team class we require by our battalion chiefs, because what it is, is in Lee County, we have a robust strike team. So every month, or every week, every Monday, each department takes a turn at being that strike team leader. So last week, we were strike team leader. So we require our battalion chiefs and above to have this S-330. So if they get called, whether it's for a brushfire, if Captain Wilson was in here when the Tipsy Cow, the one in Sanibel caught on fire, that strike team still goes to that. That IMT team, Captain Wilson was on the IMT team, which is the incident management team. She's the safety officer on it, so she responded to that call. So we do that throughout the county. Every week it changes. Sir.
Do you, like, does Chief Madden and yourself have to go to this as well?
Chief Madden is not on the IMT team yet. He's training for it. Myself, I am incident commander. Two years ago, I was division supervisor, and before that, I was strike team leader. So I've progressed up through the ranks to incident commander now.
In charge of all this stuff, so I didn't know if, like, the other two chiefs or Chief Madden.
They have the classes. It's just the training they have to get locally to be on the team. That's all it is. You get mentored or shadowed by either a division su or an IC or area command, so.
Thank you.
But we're, but we're requiring all our acting BCS and our BCS to be in that, because they could be in that role. And it's not fair that if, let's use this case, if Eric and Eric, only one of them has it, it's always going to be Eric that goes to it. Bad example with two Eric's sitting over there. So we're putting that on here, and we're also opening up to the entire county, southwest Florida. So we have some coming from Collier County, some from Charlotte, and some from Lee.
Okay, thank you.
Then the other thing we're doing is, as you guys know, every year, for the past five years, we've been going to FDIC. It's the Fire Department Instructor Conference. It's held in Indianapolis, been held in Indianapolis for almost 30-plus years now. Last year...
When is that?
It's in April usually. Last year it was in Aug, or this past year was in April. The year before that, it was in August because of COVID. So we've had the opportunity to take a class up there with, with a battalion chief out of Indianapolis Fire Department. Her name is Dr. Candace Ashby. She does a class called Leadership From the Bottom Up. I took an abbreviated class with her this past year, myself and Captain Wilson, along with, I forget who are the other guys that went up there, firefighter Joe Sanderson. The whole cadre that we took up there took this class, and they all felt it was so good. It was only an hour-long class. She does a four-hour-long training from the bottom-up leadership. So we're having her come in. She'll be here the 27th through the 29th, all three shifts, two classes per day, one at 9:00 to 12:00, and then one to 4:00. All are welcome. Again, we're opening it up to the county. We're limiting it to about 50 seats, 50 people per. Right now, we're hovering right around 40 each day, each class. So more than welcome if anybody wants to come. And this is going out to Lee County sheriffs, all the fire departments. We've got LCSO coming in.
What's the date of that?
27.
27 through the 29th of next week. Speaking of LCSO, over the past three Wednesdays, they've been using our bay to do training for how to approach a car for pull over, to when somebody gets pulled over. So they've been doing that. This Wednesday will be the last day from 5:00 to 5:00 to 7:00. So if you drive by between 5:00 and 7:00, you see all the cars in the bay or around the bay. That's why they're doing it. They're doing training there. Just a quick reminder, final budget is Wednesday, September 21st, at 5:01. Next to the last thing is, FASD's quarterly meeting is October 20th and 21st over in Fort Lauderdale on historic Los Olas Boulevard. I believe it's at the Riverfront Hotel. So if you are interested in going or want to go, please get with Anna Marie, and she will make the reservations. This Friday? 16th is like the deadline for early registration. So if we can let her know by Friday, please. And finally, I am, I am out of the office, but available by phone starting tomorrow through Thursday morning. I'll be at EMS state meetings. I have a couple different, wearing two hats. One, I'm on the EMS Advisory Council, plus with the Florida Fire Chiefs Association. State of Florida is coming down with some punitive damages or punitive measures for people that do certain things if they get in trouble. So we're having a big meeting up there for that, plus the normal state meetings that we have every quarter. So I stand for any questions you may have.
Chairman, may I ask something? First of all, I just want to make a comment. I think that's awesome that you work so closely with the sheriff's office. This is a real unique relationship Benita has, because most don't work as close as we are with. So that's fantastic. And the other thing, Chairman, I wanted to ask you, just to confirm, that 5:01 meeting, that's September 21st for the budget?
Yes.
Yes, yes. It's the final budget. It should literally, literally be like a five-minute meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm the date. Thank you, sir.
I will pretty much guarantee you that it will take longer for each of you to drive here than the meeting itself.
It's just a, it's just a hoop that we have to jump through legally to approve it.
Yes, it's the final one.
It usually just takes, open the meeting, make the motion.
Read the thing that you read again.
Right.
And say okay.
I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anybody else? The only, I talked to the chief before the meeting started. The only thing that jumped off the page of one of the reports was the number of false alarm calls. They went up 33%, and that kind of, that's kind of unusual. And I just, for the record, wanted to make, make, you know, bring notice to that, that that's, find out what the reasons are for that, you know. I mean, I know they say weather-related, but it was the same weather the month before. Why is it 33% up? And I just, that's something that I've, I've not liked running false alarm calls, because we're putting our equipment and our people in harm's way for usually nothing. And the more of those that we can eliminate, the better, the better it is for, for the staff, and certainly better for the taxpayers and citizens and not having to dodge fire trucks, so.
Chief, and what is the false calls about?
It could be anything from a power surge that, that trips it. They're supposed to have battery backups, but again, the batteries may not be up to date. They may not, the surge may be great enough to do that. A lot of times, what we get also is, right now, as we know, season's getting ready to start, so everybody's doing a lot of maintenance before the snowbirds come down.
Contractor errors.
Contractor errors, like doing, you know, the actual alarm is doing what it's supposed to do, because they're either A, pressure washing, B, blowing out dust, doing something like that. So it's sensing that there is something wrong, but it's really a contractor doing stuff like that.
Well, I know we don't like to, you know, we don't like to be heavy-handed with finding people and, and doing things like that. It's not how we roll. But by the same token, if there's no, if there's no repercussions for the alarms, we can create a, we can create a monster for ourselves. So it's a fine line, and that's in your wheelhouse, so.
We, we have, we do have the nuisance alarm ordinance that we have, and then we do fill out. The first thing we always do is try and educate, because what happens is the contractor goes there, and it's a simple process. They get with the, the either building manager, building supervisor, competent person. They ask to put the alarm on test mode, why they're doing these cleanings, because it's happened to them before. I'm sure it's not the first time, but, you know, sort of first time we go out, it's about education. Second time, it's going to be filling out these forms. Third time, it's going to be punitive and fines.
Thank you. Any public comment this evening?
Sir, did you want to speak?
Alex Grant, first of all, I want to thank you for the use of Fire Station Number Three. BTV interviewed me, you know, for, since I was the last volunteer here.
Can you talk into the microphone?
Since I was the last volunteer here, and the hat, first hazmat person, and I don't know when it'll be on TV, but anyway, thank you for the use of the 15, 20-minute interview. Okay. Another thing, you mentioned something about a strike team. Now, I am familiar with mutual aid, but can you just explain what's the difference between strike team and mutual aid?
It's, it's virtually the same. A strike team is a mutual aid. It's a group of five like and kind vehicles. Like, if we do a strike team of brush trucks, five brush trucks either from us, San Carlos, Astero, Fort Myers Beach, and...